Oh, thank you so much for being patient with us. Thank you all on Zoom for being patient with us. So this is our second meeting of the Neighborhood Quality of Life Work Group. And I'm really excited. Shay's here. Thank you so much for being here Shay and Stephanie. There should be a few other people joining us, I think. And we have, we have three gentlemen in the room here. And do I see other people that are coming in? All right. Okay, so what's it there? Okay, great. So if we want to just start, Shay, do you want to remind us of what was on the agenda? Shay's not even here. I thought that was Shay. Okay. All right. Well, we know that last week we talked about a lot of different things, right? And what we know with our goal for this committee, for this work group, is to present some recommendations to the city. And I just want to continue. I know you have a lot which I'm really excited about. So if we want to just go around, say your names. I know Mr. Laurent wasn't, Saint Laurent wasn't here last time. And I know, I think Arellis wasn't here either. So if you want to just say your name, who you are, and how excited you are to be here.
Yeah, Jeremy Saint Laurent. I unfortunately missed the last meeting, but I'm excited to join you guys today.
Thank you.
Steve Hooper. Happy to be here. Scott Brubach, Ward Six. Happy to be here.
Adelise Palbosha wasn't able to join last time, but am happy to be a part of this group. Thank you.
And Stephanie, Dr. Richardson.
This is Stephanie Murchison Brown. I live in the Upper Hill Neighborhood. I'm glad to be here.
Mr. Howard.
Stephen Howard, McKnight, Neighborhood Council.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So again, I wanted Shavant to give us a little bit of an update from the minutes. I think that you guys, you guys got the minutes, right, or the notes from the last meeting? They should have been sent out, but if not, I'll have the.
I recall what happened.
Okay. So do you want to just give us an update, Mr. Hooper?
I got a lot more from people on Nextdoor. Is she taking notes?
She's not. So we're, I'm gonna ask Arellis. Adelise, would you mind taking notes, please? Thank you. Thank you.
Our newest shoes are quality of our roads, hot bulls, gunshots, fireworks, dead trees on roadways, general crime, absentee landlords, mainly frat houses, car break-ins, theft, uncut lawns, and someone's looking for handicapped accessible playgrounds. What we got?
Thank you. So those are in addition to what we talked about.
Am I gonna go over those again, or?
You could just name them. Yeah, please.
Speeding, trash, noise, property taxes, illegal bikes, water quality, and panhandling.
Right.
And food insecurity.
Yes, big time, big time. So if we want to talk about, again, we're gonna present recommendations to the City Council and to the city from our discussions for the next, I would say, almost year that we're going to be meeting, hopefully. So if we want to maybe say one of the issues, the first one on the list from last time.
Was speeding.
Speeding. So if we think about that, what do you guys think some of the recommendations might be? Right now, we have an ordinance in the city that was just passed recently that we could have speed humps. And I know we talked about that last week a little bit. I actually am in the process of getting a speed hump installed on Du Bois Street in Indian Orchard. It's been a process.
Now, what do they call them? They don't call them speed humps. Are they something gradually, or are they called something new now?
I don't know. I know that.
It's a gradual increase.
The ordinance is a speed hump, it says. But I think it's basically a hump that you have to slow down to go over, which is good. So on Du Bois Street, Mrs. Footman, who's the neighbor there, kind of organizing the neighborhood, she had a petition that all the neighbors signed. And they all signed it. They want the traffic to slow down on that street. So the ordinance was passed, and now they want to have a speed hump installed. They wanted three, but the city said, nope, you'll only have one. So we're gonna start with one. I actually went out and got some signatures specifically because you have to get permission from the neighbors that live right in front of where the speed hump is going to be put. So I did get those signatures, and I'm going to be submitting that to the city, to DPW, to see how long it's gonna take before they can install it. So that's something.
Is it, is it permanent, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay, because they do make removable ones.
No, I think these are permanent ones.
Mainly for falling in the winter.
Yeah, yeah. But I think these are permanent ones. And we'll see what happens, you know, because, again, I feel like, you know, it takes such a long time to get, make things happen, right? And we're, you know, trying to address all these issues, all these quality of life issues that we have in our city. So that's one answer to that speed, to the speeding issue. However, in the main streets like Berkshire Avenue, which is the street that I live on, it's fifty-five is the lowest that people go. And that's a thirty-five mile an hour zone. But then they won't speed humps there because it's kind of like a main street. So what other kind of options do you guys think we might have for streets like that? Boston Road, Roseville Avenue, a whole bunch of them.
More police.
You think so? So you know what that, the answer to that's gonna be, right? There's no money for police. So what else? So more police, that's it?
How about a traffic light? Or a stop sign? I mean, if we're, if we're talking about quality of life, right, I think a light, because then that would provide a walkway for individuals to be able to get out and feel more safe to actually walk in their neighborhoods. I think one issue in my, you know, work in the community is that there's not enough walkways or crosswalks for individuals. So they're not getting out as much and walking.
Okay. Anything else? Any suggestions, ideas?
Radar signs?
Radar signs, yeah.
Because some people don't have a clue that their air going sixty miles an hour.
That's true.
Especially if you've got a real nice car.
That's true. And those can be put up solar, so wouldn't cost really too much. The Indian Orchard Citizens Council had an innovative idea that we were gonna partner with the Sheriff's Department. And this is a big project. The Sheriff's Department has, you know, those little cars that kids drive when they're little, the little baby cars. And they have a whole bunch of them. So we take those, kind of like, maybe paint them and, you know, cute little things that put a plant in it or something, put it like at the curb. So people think there's a car, a baby car, and hopefully they might slow down. That's something, you know, that we thought about.
Something's in the chat. Should I monitor the chat as well? Okay, so this is from Steve. Can traffic cams be used in issues speeding tickets?
Hmm, that's a good idea.
They can.
They can be.
They can.
Mr. Hooper said they can't be.
The police officer has to see it in person.
Really? Even if it's a.
But follow those cameras. Follow those cameras. They're monitoring if someone just robbed a bank or whatever. They get a license plate. Not for traffic violations.
I wonder if we can change that. Make it, make it an ordinance that we can.
That would be good.
Right?
Yeah.
Traffic cams to send violations. Maybe that might be something that we could, you know, create a law that we can do that. So that must be, that could be we could put forward.
Let's go on. Steve, reply back. In other states, they are used.
Yes.
State issue.
State issue. So then we would have to deal with the state reps up in, on that?
I think the prohibition might be statewide. That's something we have to look into. But I
Okay.
I don't believe there's any of this value Massachusetts that has. Red light cameras.
That's what they're called, red light cameras.
Or speeding cameras. I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, that's something that I think we can certainly put forward as a recommendation. And then, you know, we'd have to figure out how to get it done.
Okay.
Good. That's a great idea. All right. Anything else on that one?
I don't think so.
Okay, great. Mr. Hooper, what was the next?
Next one was trash.
Trash. Hasn't he ever been to Japan? But the cleanest, they have the cleanest streets, right? And how do they do that?
So does in Montreal. Montreal is pretty clean, too.
Do you know how they do it?
European cities hire people. They have people on the city payroll that dignified job. They go around, they have a uniform, and they help police through the streets.
So hire people to keep streets clean.
It's good civil service job.
Yeah. We used to have that. Remember the street sweepers?
Yeah, they still have them, but you rarely see them. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's a machine now.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not really someone walking down the street.
That was, I always remember machines.
Yeah.
Yeah. In the chat by Stephen, garbage cans can be placed at intersections.
You're saying Stevens. I didn't say that.
Huh? Are there two Stevens?
There are. Mr. Howard and Mr. Hooper.
I have to say, it's a good name. That was my grandfather's name.
There you go. What else? Because I know, you know, we have the the no littering violations, right? And it just seems like nobody really pays attention to them.
That's why if you saw on Nextdoor, I posted all the ordinance officers for their area. Then we called. I got Mr. Jason Levelitz, who's pretty good and responsive. He takes care of a lot of complaints.
Yeah.
In regards to trash, I know it's, but I know there's a fine also for dog poop or waste that a lot of individuals are not compliant with. And so I feel like that falls in the same category as far as trash or litter, you know, because it's just, it's becoming, in my observation, more of an issue also.
I agree with that. And I forgot where I was. I want to say it was in maybe North Carolina. They have, where when you register your dog, you have to submit a poop sample so that they can do DNA. And then when they find poop on the street, they'll test it. And whoever's dog that would be, they send them a fine. Oh, I don't know if we could look into that. I don't know. I could propose it. I don't know what they'll say. Yeah, but that's big. Yeah. And especially in parks where kids play. You know, it's not safe. It's terrible, awful.
Yeah.
DNA. So when you get your dog license, then, you know, people have to get their license.
I don't know if people know about this.
We could, you want to bring it up?
If anybody can get from your city civic association or the police station, it's a Good Neighbor Handbook. It's a guide, it's a guide to quality of life regulations in Springfield. It's very informed, and it actually tells you the fines and everything, what cost or everything.
Right. Yep. And it's going to be available online too now. So that's good. All right, good. Anything else on trash, you think? I know that we have our community cleanups. You know, every neighborhood does them, I think, maybe once a year. It'd be really great if the neighborhood councils might, you know, maybe do them a few times a year if possible, and kind of incorporate the kids into it so that the kids learning, you know, that this is something, this is our neighborhood, we want to keep it clean, we want to make sure it's good so that they don't throw things on the, on the ground when they're, you know, walking to and from school and the store and all that stuff.
It all comes back to the parents. Would it be worthwhile considering like an education campaign?
That'd be amazing. I think that'd be great. An education campaign.
Wasn't Mayor Sarno years ago really pushing for Clean City?
Yeah.
You said it was.
Key word. One way of doing it is gardening it, but.
Yes. You're speaking my language.
Yeah, the plant lady over there. Education campaign for the youth, right?
I think for everything.
And then, of course, the parents gotta be involved too, but specifically for youth and parents. Because I think it's, it's very important, you know, for us to get that generated.
I got a fifty by fifty yard. Everything from A to Z.
Nice. Nice. All right. All right. So that's for the trash. What's, what's the next item, Mr. Hooper?
Noise.
Noise.
Lot exhaust, lot music.
And again, you know, I think having the Good Neighbor Handbook so that people know what the noise ordinance is, what time and all that, I think it's important. So sharing that is very important.
From seven in the morning till ten at night, I believe.
And then the dirt bikes, the exhaust cars, I, I, I don't know. What can we do about that? Because I can't stand it.
Well, the thing about not selling gas, I think, was nonsense.
Well, they're confiscating the bikes.
Haven't heard anything recently.
Right.
I think a month ago, they got some.
So noise, I don't.
In the chat by Stephen, my understanding is that subcommittees can have a subcommittee. Is that correct?
Subcommittees of what?
So I said.
We can't hear him.
I know you shouldn't.
For this committee. So for this committee, if we can have a subcommittee of this committee.
So this is not a committee. This is a work group. So we're not gonna have committees coming out of here. However, and I'm gonna always say this, I encourage you, everybody, to join their neighborhood council or their civic association in their neighborhood. And there, you guys can have subcommittees and can create, you know, pockets. Because I always believe that, you know, anytime we have to make a change, it has to be local, right? And if each neighborhood, there's twenty-six neighborhood councils in the city, if each neighborhood council focused on their neighborhood, it would spread to the entire city eventually, you know. So again, Mr. Howard, you know, this is a work group, and we are presenting recommendations to the, the City Council and to the city. So that's, you know, that's not something that we're gonna have a subcommittee to work on. Say, you know, an education campaign. I'd love to be able to do that. But maybe one of the city citizens councils will take it on. Or even somebody in the city can say, hey, that's a great idea. Let's take it on once we present it.
So Mr. Howard replied, other work groups have working groups that, that's not in violation of guidelines.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howard. What else on noise? Is what else can I say?
How is it dealt with now? Just fines, probably.
Yeah.
Fines, confiscation.
Confiscation.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if it's still up, but there was passports for.
For the dirt bikes, right? What about the cars and the, and the music? Like the music that you could hear that bang in my car?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, probably that's, the officers would have to stop them and give them a ticket or something. Yeah. Okay, Shay Vonitier. Now Shay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Hooper, what's the next?
Next thing was property taxes.
Property taxes. That's a big.
Someone said on seniors, but it probably should be everybody.
Yeah, I agree. Everybody should have a reduction in their property taxes. And like I said last time, we have the cannabis tax money, we have the MGM, you know, casino money. We should be getting, because that's what we were told was going to happen. You know, when we got cannabis here, we said, oh, this is great because the neighborhoods are gonna get, you know, some resources. And so we haven't seen it yet. We're actually on the City Council working on doing a cannabis tax and MGM money and where it is. We're gonna try to figure out where that money is going, how it can be used for property taxes. Last year, we had, I want to say, over sixty-seven million dollars in what they call free cash, certified free cash. And I didn't know why we couldn't use that money to give our property taxpayers relief, everybody, right? Because especially after the pandemic, seniors who are living in their homes paid off. Now they have to pay their taxes. Their income isn't going up, but everything else is. And so that's something that we really are, I'm really, that's one of my things on the City Council.
Do we actually know where these years the MGM money is going?
No, I think it, we might know more, Mr. Howard. Okay, so it's going, I think it's going into the general fund.
Yeah, I think.
Well, and that's why we need to, we are going to be looking into it. So I'm, we're going to be bringing not MGM because MGM pays their taxes. So that's not their issue. It's the city. We're gonna find out where that money is going and how it's being used and why it can't be used to give our taxpayers some relief.
I, I actually propose we give property tax breaks to people who grow food. If you get a tax rebate, if you're using your property for food, then you should have considered, you know, at least a property tax, maybe a rebate dealt. Keep the garden going. I have a stand in front of my house, and I get problems with my neighbors. And I need somebody like you to show me how to do it, right?
Property tax rebate for growing food.
Yeah. I think, what, forty percent of the food grown during World War II was in back, backyard, right? Big green gardens? We could get back to that easily.
I, I have a question. What about the trash fee? I thought that that was gonna end at some point.
I, I did too. Yeah.
So at what point is it gonna end? You know, I thought it was gonna end two years ago. He said it was gonna end, but we still pay the trash fee.
Yeah, that's right. So that, yeah, that's, that's another thing, you know. I agree, because every year we're not, we pay taxes for our trash. But what, and I know that they instituted it at a time when we were under receivership and we needed the money, you know, but I think since then, we, you know, thanks to Mayor Sarno, we've been able to get to a point where we don't need it anymore. So why do we still have it? I agree with you Shay. But again, that's the mayor's call.
Is that the mayor, sheriff, or the city council?
The mayor.
It's the mayor.
Yeah. Yeah. I think if it was up to the city council, the first day I got on there, what if, look, we gotta get rid of that property tax. Yeah.
A question in, in the chat. Can home improvement funds be leveled so that maximum household income will be aligned with cost of living increases?
Make sure you take that and put it in, in the notes. Because I really like, I like that. Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and it should be, right? Because the, I think the guideline, income guidelines are too low. And then I, my fear is that that money is sitting there, say, if the federal government sent it to us for that purpose, and we don't use it, we have to send it back. So we're not using the money. So I think that's a great idea. So you're talking about the home repair programs?
Oh, yeah, ARPA.
ARPA, yeah. That's going away in twenty twenty-four. But it's here now and.
I've been assigned to work on that. I've been assigned to work on that with my city council.
Oh, good.
My city council, my civic association.
Okay, good. Good. So you know, each, each neighborhood council is getting a hundred thousand dollars. And it has to be spent by twenty twenty-four. So I think, I don't know if we can, you know, I don't think we can do that, do like any kind of property tax relief for our residents. I don't think so.
Good. So to that point and to the, I'm sorry, the gentleman with the black and yellow shirt on, I didn't, I sorry, I didn't get your name. Scott. With, maybe is there something that we could propose or come up with as far as those funds and helping homeowners add like water barrels for gardening? So like that we could collect our own water barrels for the garden and grow our own foods? Maybe some of those funds could go towards homeowners and growing food?
Yeah. I don't know about the ARPA funds because they may have already been assigned. You know, it hasn't been spent yet. But I think when we get to food, the food situation, I think that's something that we can certainly talk about and find ways to help people grow their own food. Because it's very important for us to be able to do that.
If you don't mind, I'm crafting a kind of independent proposal that I've shared with some food advocates in the city that I'd like to share with you in the group.
Sure, absolutely.
Put the fishing tag right now, so.
Okay.
I'll have it available soon.
Okay, okay. No, that sounds great. Good. All right. So the property tax.
For the rainwater collection, just make sure that we're that's potentially a code enforcement. West Nile, Skidos. So I would definitely check any type of bylaws about rainwater collection.
That's something that, that's something that could, I mean, obviously not the illness thing, but any bylaws or zoning that could change though, right? I mean, if there are restrictions on rainwater collection, and if we find a safe way of doing it, we can always petition to have a change.
Sure.
And I don't think there is any.
There is. There is something, because I, I do have two water barrels, and I checked with the city when I purchased my home, and they said, as long as it's no greater than fifty gallons, it's, it's okay. So for a small garden, it's, it's okay.
Right.
Yeah. For some reason, I think the city was selling it at one time.
They were.
Yeah, is that right?
Yeah, they were.
Wow.
At reduced, very reduced rate.
Yeah. It'd be nice if they sold those again in composting bins. That kind of stuff would be great.
No, I would, I was thinking about.
That would be really good.
I'm sure it was a way we could get Big Y to compost out of the back of their stores. There's so much potential there. But that's a side.
All right. Next issue.
Next one was illegal bikes.
Hmm. We talked about that a little bit. Summer is coming, and we might be seeing more of those.
What happens with those when they're, are they auctioned off or?
They might be destroyed, I think.
I think they're destroyed now. Is, and is that, like, is there a record of that? So that could be something that people can see. I mean, that might be a little aggressive, but.
Illegal bikes.
They have a big marijuana. All they, they show you burning it all.
Confiscated and destroyed, right?
How, how that, how does that word feed back to the community that needs to?
Right. How do they know? So maybe have some sort of a campaign like that, right? To make people aware that that's what happens if you get caught with an illegal dirt bike. This is what's gonna happen.
Let the neighbors have some goggles and lime sugar. Where the kids, that's a word of mouth that spreads the real liquidity. Nobody wants their property destroyed, for sure.
Yeah, because I actually haven't been seeing too many of them so far, but it's early, so we still have time. All right. All right. What else? What time is it? We have to keep it in.
Do they sell the dirt bikes or do they destroy them?
They destroy them.
They destroy them? I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Anything else, Dr. Richardson? No. Okay.
No.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm still processing what you're.
What happened?
I have, I have a question. Is there a way to maybe address The dirt bikes without destroying them and repurpose them for individuals that don't have any. Transportation means we know that transportation is such a huge barrier in Springfield and. Not everyone has the resources or access to purchase, you know, vehicles, but if we could potentially. You know, propose instead of destroying them, repurposing them. Um, I don't know, I just thought of a night, I thought of that.
Yeah.
They're dirt bikes, they're supposed to be off road.
But not for the street. They're not supposed to be on the road.
Gotcha.
So I don't know, you know, if that's. The police department basically gets them and and does what they do with them.
Maybe perhaps auction them and then if they auction them off, they can use them. Resources. And you see them back in the street.
But that is an issue that, you know, something it's it's a little bit more complicated than just, you know. Getting them off the streets, I guess, but. That was the problem because they're. Were in the streets, they're not legal, you know, God forbid someone gets hurt. Um, no protections at all.
They have insurance all the time.
Not on those. I don't think so. All right, anything else on that? What did we have next on our listeners, the Hoover?
Water quality.
Oh, gosh.
Yes, I think there's.
That's a big one.
Sorry, one question came in the chat. Can a park be used for dirt bikes recreation?
When we build it. Um, we we are working on on getting a park in Springfield, um, but I think it's a non-motorized.
Yeah, you'll have noise.
Wheel park, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So the.
If you have that many motorcycles and, right, I don't think there's a place in Springfield, you won't have noise from things.
Yeah.
That's.
Because they make a lot of noise. Cause the only place that you could ride a dirt bike is is like out in the woods, right? Those are like off-terrain vehicles or something like that. Did that answer the question?
I just have one question. I thought we were gonna get a minute. Regarding um the last, are they gonna be written minutes or, you know, how?
They were written and I sent them to the city council clerk's um office. And they should have sent them out. They, did they not send them out today? Let me see if they sent them out with.
What, what do you, you go on? Are you supposed to go on them, are they supposed to be emailed or something as an attachment?
Yes, they would email them to you. What I'll do is in the morning, I'll make sure that they they send them out to you, cause I did send them to the um city clerk's office.
Yeah.
And Shay did an amazing job. Thank, thank you. Thank you for that, Dr. Richardson. Okay. So water quality, does everyone know that we're getting a new water treatment plant? It's gonna cost a lot of money that we might be paying for us. You know, um.
Should be ready in twenty twenty seven.
That's what they said, yeah.
Do you know how our water is filtered now?
Well.
Through sand.
Hmm, really?
Yeah, that's why you're seeing the uh chemicals kids causing, cause it's going through sand and now with the. New E- EPA regulations and everything. But yeah, it's being filtered, it's like cool filters that you see it.
So how well is our quality, water quality regarding other?
Sounders. There's, there's some cancer-causing agents right now. It's minute, but over long term.
Mm-hmm. So what they, yeah, what they, they sent out the water, Springfield Water Service Commission sent out a notice. They send it out every few months with your water bill actually, and it tells you what the quality is. They're not saying that we need to stop drinking it. They're not saying. That um we have to boil water, but they're saying there's some concerns and if you're pregnant or if you have some um. Uh underlying uh illnesses, then maybe you might not wanna drink it. Um, I'm suggesting to everybody to just filter their water. If they're gonna drink tap water, which I really think we should, right? But use a filter, um at least because that's for three years, um. Actually, four more years because it were in twenty twenty three before we get into the water. Um, and I think it's only gonna kick in once.
But this has been happening forever. It's just now, the new technology, they're. Finding these cancer-causing agents.
Yeah.
Is there a way that the city can give the homeowners? Filters?
So city provide water filters?
It's a good idea.
So the the um. The filtration that you would need to get rid of the clarifying agent is no water, like normal carbon. Yes, I think it's like they said, ten minutes of contact, so it has to be like either a unit.
Like a Brita filter in a, in a, in a thing, not even that.
Like reverse osmosis, things you would put under your, for under your faucet, or like a whole home. Which are like two, three grand to get done, so. Um, like a typical per- per filter.
They won't remove it, right?
And reverse osmosis, they have multiple filters or something.
Yeah, you say.
I, I have them at the pharmacy. Are are lead pipes an issue at all in Springfield? I'm not from here, so. Is that something that needs old osmosis? Okay, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but not wide scale. Like Flanders. There's a lot of old, not like Flanders.
Yeah, I don't know about lead pipes, you said? I haven't heard anything about that. But I'm sure we do have some old buildings around here. Stephanie, did you have anything else on that?
Yeah, I just, so like I have a filter system that goes through my refrigerator. You were saying that's not adequate either. You know. You got the water that comes through your filter system and your refrigerator.
From what I was told, the larger contaminants, um it's the product or those, what was concerning in the. Well, I shouldn't say concerning, what was that issue in the recent report um for the waters commission? I think it's tangents. Contact um through your typical carbon filter or separate system would be the only way to. Remove it and get it down to a safer level. You know, I I don't know if a fridge would work, but a Brita filter or um the screw-on faucet filters wouldn't suffice.
Yeah, it's very concerning, um you know, read those reports.
And one time we were gonna sell our water, water.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So if the city were to provide any kind of filters, they would be those expensive ones that they would have to do. But that's, again, we're sending recommendations. We're not solving the problems for them, right? Um, but, you know, we do have money, right? The um casino money, the cannabis money. Um, so we have options. All right, I think that's good. So we've got some ideas for some of the things, um. And maybe, cause I have another meeting at seven, um. And um we'll continue working on these. I can't wait to talk about, there's a housing um issue and the. Food um desert issue that I think is very important. Um, that we continue to discuss and then I'm sure other things will come up as we continue to meet. Um, okay, is there anything else from the Zoom?
I was actually thinking about changing my vote for last time, instead of twice a month, the once a month.
Once a month.
Well, that's just right.
You can revisit that, the, how do people feel about that?
Was that the previous year?
Yeah, cause right now they voted to do twice a month, but. Mister uh Hoover is proposing once a month, which I think might make sense, right? Because we're not going to be. Um, solving any problems, right? We're just going to be putting forth recommendations um to the city. And of course. Go ahead.
I wanted, I wanted to mention about the blight, like, um. Vandenhouses.
Mm-hmm.
And things like that in our neighborhood, um. I know there's an active, is there still active, um? Kind of program going on about these blight, um, uh, property?
We can look into that. I'm not sure if this active, um, but I know that there was a campaign to get rid of blight. A few years ago, um, I haven't heard about it lately. But that's something we can add to our list.
Part of my proposal addresses that.
Okay, great. So maybe we can talk about that next, next time we meet, okay? So how do people feel if um we changed from twice a month to once a month? Um. Our next meeting would be on.
Sixth, thirteenth.
Yeah. June sixth or the thirteenth. What's this, the first Tuesday, second Tuesday?
I wanna keep second Tuesday just as a rhythm.
Yeah, we could, right?
That means the thirteenth, right?
So I have a question.
I think it's more difficult to to meet more than. A month.
So you're thinking once a month?
Once a month, I I think it's more because I'm I'm getting more meetings. In the summer because of the different organizations and. And I'm, you know, traveling, so it's a bit difficult.
Okay, all right, so let's do it. If everybody's in favor of it, let's do it.
I'm sorry, I just wanna point out that a lot of the neighborhood council meetings are the second and third Tuesday so that. I know Mister Howard also just put in the chat that the second Tuesday is bad for him. So, um, is there, can we? If we are involving our neighborhood council, do we wanna confirm? Um, which Tuesday is best for all of us or should we just go ahead with the second Tuesday?
Oh, is there any issue with the first Tuesday for anybody? The civic association, so there's always probably gonna be a meeting. At some time, unfortunately, what time is the civic, is there a neighborhood council meeting?
It's usually, um, I believe seven to eight, I I could be wrong or six to. Um, let me double check right now before.
Six, on one, on the third Wednesday, second, second Wednesday.
Turn from six, six fifteen depending until police meet until eight, eight thirty sometimes.
And now, so, so the, at least the Pine Point one is the second Tuesday, seven, at seven.
At seven, night starts at six, that's uh, he said. And yours is, um, it starts at six?
Six.
Okay. So that might be something that we need to, um.
That's on the first Tuesday, the month is.
How many civic associations meet on the second Tuesday and how many meet on the first? Unless we say the last Tuesday, right?
I think the last Tuesday, cause I just recall from, you know, checking their schedules last year. Um, the, the, I know definitely the first and. And second Tuesdays are really busy, so I think we will probably be more successful with the last.
What about the third Tuesday? Does anybody, any, let me see it, it should be in here actually.
I look back, it's probably a civic association, but doesn't tell you the.
Doesn't say when they meet, no, it doesn't. Okay. All right, well, let's revisit that, cause I really would like to make sure that everybody is able to be here if possible. Um, if we don't have any meetings, any, if. The third and the last Tuesday, then maybe we could. One of those, yeah? Stephanie, call me.
Hi. No, I have no problem.
Okay, and then the, oh, but these are community police. Um. Meet meetings. Who knows that far? Okay. Third to the, at six forty, well, that's the East Springfield Neighborhood Council. So there's always going to be a meeting. But maybe the last Tuesday might be, um. Because that one, and that one is at seven, and I meet at six, it will be over by seven. So.
It just step off the trunk.
All right, Dr. Mer. Okay, so shall we propose then the last Tuesday of the month, um at six o'clock for everybody? And I know, you know, some people will be taking vacations, some. So, and should we meet in May or in June? Then we have a whole like.
It'd be like a month and a half.
A month and a half in between. And then it's my birthday too, in June. When, June, oh, June first, mine's is the twenty seventh.
Mine's today.
Is it?
Happy birthday! We should sing happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. Not necessary.
Okay.
So the twenty seventh?
Yeah, so the fourth Tuesday. And we'll go until June. In the meantime, I'll make sure you guys have the minutes for the last meeting and this meeting right here. Um, and please, I like what you did, um. Mister Hoover about um getting input from the community from next door. There's a lot of other apps and a lot of other places. I know Facebook a lot of times has a lot of. People inputting regarding, you know, their quality of life in the city of Springfield, which is what we're gonna be on. You know, focusing on, so.
So I have one last question. Um, yeah. Being that you mentioned social media, um, is it okay if I create a form asking the community and post it on social medias?
Uh.
Gather their concerns or suggestions?
I guess that would be okay.
Well, I, I, yeah, I do it all the time.
Yeah, Steve does. I mean, Mister Hoover does that all the time. And I do too on on Face, whenever I see, especially on property taxes, I have a whole. Notes thing on people that comments about property tax issues.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, definitely want the community input. Okay, all right, well, thank you all so much. I have to open this other Zoom meeting. Going out of you.
Real quick, I've seen these kind of barriers on roads before, um, not around here though. And they can, they force people to have to slow down because you have this.
Yeah, yeah.
That's an option also.
So they, um.
I can't remember what your home, there's a strange word for it.
Yeah, they did something like that in Indian Orchard and the people got mad. A bump out, I think it's called, so they bump out the curb so that people have to slow down to go through it. Yeah, but I think, yeah, definitely, anything to slow people down.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm, I'm gonna have to leave now. I got another.
No, but they, we're all leaving, you have tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Taking notes.